I call this meeting of the City of Pahokee Commission Meeting of Tuesday, January the fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five to order at six oh two P. M. May we please stand for the invocation provided by Commissioner Derek Bowden, followed by the pledge of the legion.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for blessing us to see another day. Before we ask you for anything else, we want to ask you for forgiveness of sins. We forgive others, we ask that you forgive us as well. Father bless us this day to do the business of the city and to always put the city first. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Bab.
President.
Vice Mayor Mervin.
President.
Commissioner Bowden.
President.
Commissioner Calvin Williams. Commissioner Calvin Williams. Commissioner McPherson.
President.
City Manager.
President.
City Attorney.
Here.
City Clerk is present.
Thank you, City Clerk. Thank you Commissioners, thank you staff, and most importantly, thank our listening audience for being here today to participate in our regular scheduled Commission Meeting of June, July, or December, January fourteenth, sorry, two thousand and twenty. Before we move on, we'll get Commission consent or approval to have Vice Mayor Mervin participate by telephone. Also Commissioner Mike Williams, not Williams, was Calvin, who's attempting to be on, she's on, and also Commissioner Cowans. Does that indicate a motion?
I make a motion that we accept Commissioner Calvin and Commissioner Mervin to be present by phone.
Second. It has been moved by Commissioner McPherson and properly seconded by Commissioner Bowden to allow both Commissioner Calvin Williams and Vice Mayor Mervin to participate by phone. Call for questions. Hearing none, are you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner McPherson.
Yes.
Commissioner Bowden.
Yes.
Commissioner Calvin Williams. Vice Mayor Mervin.
Yes.
Mayor Bab.
Yes. Thank you Commissioners, motion passed by unanimous vote. Now we'll move to additions of emergency bases based on the City Manager discretion, also deletion if any, and approval of agenda items. City Manager, intercity manager, do we have any addition to the agenda?
No additions, Mayor, but we do have a deletion. We're recommending deleting Resolution two thousand and twenty-five zero-two, Resolution of City Commission of the City of Pahokee authorizing and directing and executing of a lease agreement between the City of Pahokee and Lutheran Services Florida. Just learned that Lutheran Services want to take a second look at the actual final agreement that we've been negotiating. They will present under presentations, but will reconsider this resolution at a future meeting, maybe as soon as the January twenty-eighth meeting. That's the only one, sir.
Okay. I would make one comments concerning the addition to the agenda. At our last Commission meeting, interim City Manager indicated that you would have a decision made by this meeting whether or not you was gonna move forward with the position that was offered to you and the salary that was presented, and we don't have it on the agenda. I know this probably gonna be brought up, I just want to be proper and make sure that if we're discussing an issue, it should be on the agenda.
Yes, sir.
Could you provide any information of why this item wouldn't be on the agenda for this meeting?
No, I can provide that I have a response and it's under my comments, I was gonna recommend adding it to the January twenty-eighth meeting, accepting the contract as approved and recommended from previous meetings.
Commission, we have heard that there are no additions, one deletion to the agenda, and that interim City Manager will discuss the contract that was offered to him during his City Manager report. I'll entertain a motion for the acceptance of the agenda as presented.
Mayor Bab, I move to accept the agenda with the deletion of Resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash zero-two.
Second.
I can't hear, um, Mayor Bab.
We'll try to speak up a little louder.
Would you like the mayor to restate it?
Yes.
Mayor Bab, I would like to accept the agenda with the deletion of Resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash zero-two.
And then second.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Bowden and properly seconded by Commissioner McPherson for the adoption of the agenda as presented with the deletion of Resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash oh-two. Call for questions.
Uh, yes, I would like to add that if possible, just some concerns of mine, and it's, can I, attorney would be proper for me to comment now regarding that particular resolution after we've already?
Are you referring to the one that is, would be deleted, the one dealing with the lease agreement?
No, the, um, the comment, I guess, the City Manager had made about the contract coming to the next meeting.
It was, he said he will bring it up during his report. You can either bring it up as a future agenda item, you can bring it up as a comment under your reports, which I think, let me see.
Okay, I can do it as a future agenda item.
Yes.
There was any questions, are you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Bowden.
Yes.
Commissioner McPherson.
Yes.
Commissioner Calvin Williams.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mervin.
Yes.
Mayor Bab.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk, thank you Commissioners, motion passed by unanimous vote. Now we'll move to presentation, proclamation, public service announcement, public comments, agenda items only at this time. City. City Clerk, do we have any public service comments or public comments cards completed?
For this section, we have one by Ms. Annie Eifel.
All right, good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. Annie Eifel with Healthier Glades. I just wanted to share with you some announcements of some upcoming events that is happening. First, I want to talk a little bit about the Glades Housing Fair. When I presented at the last Commission meeting, I shared with you that we were in the process of planning a housing fair for our Glades community. The date has changed, the new date is February twenty-second. I will send an updated flyer to the City Managers that he can share with you guys. It still will be at West Tech from nine A. M. to two P. M., and this is an opportunity for vendors. We're also looking for food trucks, if anybody's interested, please get with me. We're trying to get realtors, contractors, banks, and trying to give out information. There will be some workshops on the pre and post purchase process. There will be some opportunities for folks to learn more about renting options in the Glades, because you know housing is scarce in our community, and then information and resources on how to maintain and keep your home. So that, the date has changed to February twenty-second. The other thing I want to talk about is, you've probably seen it on our Healthier Glades Facebook page, about the tree giveaway that will be held at Shiloh on January twenty-fifth. I can't remember what time, I think it's at ten o'clock. We did it in Belgrade at Pioneer Park, and the lines started real early. So if you're interested, you can get a fruit tree and a native tree. And I think the flyer that's on our page shows the type of trees that they'll be giving out. So we'll be at Shiloh on January twenty-fifth. And then last but not least, uh, what was my other one, my mind? Oh, let's move campaign. So every year, Healthier Glades has been hosting a campaign to try to promote and encourage physical fitness. We'll be doing two activities, one that's gonna be starting January twenty-eighth, where we'll be doing our yoga sessions, chair yoga sessions. We're gonna do, it's gonna be both online and in person. We're finalizing the location, more than likely it'll probably be at St. John, but I will confirm that. And the flyer will have the Q. R. code where you can scan to participate in the chair yoga. And then we're gonna bring Zumba back to Pahokee starting in March. So we're gonna be working that out with Parks and Rec to see if we could do it at the gym. And so with that, that's all I have, any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
No additional.
At this time, we would go through with our presentation, we'll have our interim City Manager introduce each of the presenter as they present.
Yes, sir, Mayor Commission, in public, we have four presentations scheduled tonight. Our first one will be by Dr. Jenga, give an update and overview of Empower Healthcare, Inc.
Good evening, Mayor Bab.
Good evening.
Commission, City Manager. We have a PowerPoint.
Empower, Empower Health.
If you don't have it. It's okay, so we're Empower Healthcare. We are a nonprofit primary care clinic that offers women's health services and HIV prevention and treatment. I'm a board certified HIV specialist. We have been in Pahokee since two thousand and two, providing services whether or not a person has the ability to pay. I've been in the Glades serving the community since two thousand and thirteen, but now we do have our clinic at four nine one East Main Street, which is the former United Methodist Church. I just wanted to give an overview of our programs and just to kind of give you an impact statement of what we've been doing throughout the year. We have our chronic disease management. As you know, our community has quite a bit of diabetes and high blood pressures. So what we're doing is meeting the patients where they are, whether it's in the clinic, in their home, even telehealth. We have an app that we provide our patients and we teach them how to use it, where if they can't get to the clinic, we can actually see them on their telephones or on their computer. With that program, we touch bases with our patients at least once a month, either our social worker or myself, to make sure that they have everything that they need to be their best self. If they're having problems with their medication, we help connect with the pharmacy, the specialists, whatever that they need, to ensure that we are meeting them where they are and helping them to get what they need. We've been pretty successful in that program, helping people to lower their INRMs, their blood pressures, and teaching individuals to know their numbers, which is very important. How can we advocate about ourself for ourself if we don't know how to advocate? Our Women's Health Program, as most of you know, I love women's health. It's because of First Lady Bab that we are really focusing on providing women's healthcare to the women of Pahokee. And women's health, what that means is women get free breast exams, free PAC smears, free mammograms if they are underinsured or uninsured. We participate with a program with the Department of Health where if a woman cannot even get to their mammogram, we help them to get to a facility where they can have their mammograms, or we bring the mammograms vans to the Glades, whether it be Pahokee, Belgrade, South Bay. We've done events all throughout the Glades, and we've served nearly a hundred plus women. And we are not a large clinic, it's myself and our social worker, and now we have a heart court vista through the American Heart Association who functions as a community health worker. And just to, just to give you a little note, the women's health is so important in the Glades throughout. We love men, we take care of men too. We take care of men too. But our numbers for cervical cancer, invasive malignant cervical cancer in the Glades are high. I'm waiting for some statistics to be able to report back from the Department of Health, but it is Cervical Cancer Awareness Month, and their system is down. So we just met with them on Friday, so we'll be able to get some of that information soon, because I know we all want to know what the numbers are. We do a lot of community outreach, whether it be with Healthier Glades, as well as the Faith Health Educators, which are stakeholders of the communities where we go around, and we, we just offer free health screenings and health services. And we probably serve a good two hundred people a year, Ms. Annie, correct me if I'm wrong, two hundred people at least a year that we're providing free brain health screenings, free circulation screenings. We were able to get a grant from Quantum in the community where we're helping people not to make sure the blood flow in the legs are secure. A lot of amputations, diabetes is not what it was when our parents and grandparents had it. It can be prevented, it can be treated, people can live well, healthy lives with it. And we also have our Pearls Program, which is a mental health program, program to encourage active reporting. And we've been able to have individuals who are from the Glades, who have gone on to advance their education in mental health or as nurse practitioners, to be able to serve our community in that capacity of helping to decrease incidences of depression. This is, we accept all kinds, I'll leave a flyer in the back, but for those individuals who do not have anything at all through the Department of Health, we are able to provide them care under our volunteer provider program so that they can at least have their needs met. We also provide some vaccinations for free as well. Last year, we had an event called Know Your Numbers By Heart, and the community enjoyed it, and they asked that we bring it back, and so we are. Thank you to the city for allowing us to use the gym, and it's going to be on February first. We're gonna have American Heart Association, Diabetes Coalition, F. A. U., Compass Health. Glades Initiative is also donating food to the event as well. We're having nutritionists to do a live food demonstration, because we can donate all the food that we want, fresh fruits, fresh vegetables, but if we don't know what to do with it and how to prepare it to make it taste good, we're not going to eat it, we're not going to lower our numbers by doing that. So my daughter's passing around the flyer, we encourage everyone to come, eleven to two P. M. We will have a discussion panel with some cardiology experts as well to come and talk about how we can keep our heart healthy and live long, healthy lives. Any questions? Yes, sir. Oh, yes, okay. Well, I'd like to thank you for your time, and thank you to the city for being so supportive. Our Women's Health Event was just wonderful this year, and I was just so happy to see some of the Commissioners come out and support the community for women's health, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next presenters will be presenting from Lutheran Services Florida. We have Ms. Conway, Mr. Bayless, and Ms. Wilkinson.
Hello. First, I would like to thank the City of Pahokee for their relationship, the longstanding relationship that we have had with the City of Pahokee all this time. Lutheran Services Florida is a nonprofit that operates Head Start and Early Head Start Programs. In Palm Beach County, we are currently serving two thousand seventy-three children in the whole county. Next slide. Lutheran Services Florida operates fifty slots for the City of Pahokee. L. S. F. continues to provide full day, full year Head Start and Early Head Start Services, where we will continue to offer ten-hour instructional days, five days a week, to meet the needs of Palm Beach County families and children. Head Start and Early Head Start Programs will operate in approximately two hundred and twenty-two days, delivering two thousand two hundred and twenty hours annually for the children of Pahokee. Our program delivery is a comprehensive enrichment program that continues to meet the needs of children and families through a broad range of services and resources. Our services have been stable and uninterrupted, and continue to provide support to children and their families to prepare the children to transition to kindergarten. In our services, we do provide comprehensive services, which are health, social services, disabilities, nutrition, and mental health services that addresses the holistic needs of children as well as the parents to help families become more self-reliant. These are the end of the year enrollment for Pahokee. In two thousand and twenty-two, we had thirty-one out of fifty, we were thirty-eight percent under enrolled. In the year two thousand and twenty-three, we had thirty-nine out of fifty, twenty-two percent under enrolled. And in the year two thousand and twenty-four, we had thirty-two out of fifty, thirty-six percent under enrolled. The Office of Head Start determines which agencies are operating with an actual enrollment in their Head Start and Early Head Start by reviewing the funded enrollment based on data that are not less than four consecutive months. In the year two thousand and twenty-three, L. S. F. was determined to be chronically under enrolled, and it was determined that the government could recapture, withhold, or reduce the base of our grant, of our program. We, I would like to say that we, in the last three years, are under enrollment, it has impacted just in Pahokee, five hundred and seventy thousand dollars to our grants. And even though L. S. F. was determined to be chronically under enrolled since two thousand and twenty-three, we have been committed to providing services to the children of Pahokee. What we are doing is we're working towards meeting full enrollment, but we also have submitted an enrollment reduction at the end of two thousand and twenty-four. We are still awaiting approval for the reduction. If the enrollment reduction is approved, we will continue serving the children of Pahokee until the end of the school year of this year, July two thousand and twenty-five, and transition the children, the children who will transition to kindergarten, and the other children, we will offer slots in our process centers, which are located in South Bay and Belgrade, our P. P. centers. We continue to, our efforts to be fully enrolled this year. We have partnered up with the Early Learning Coalition to reach out to their waitlist and offer potential clients our services. We partner up with the school district, which provide a waitlist of the families that could not be served in the school district to offer our services. Our family engagement team and teaching staff canvass the city and the recruitment activities on the Pahokee neighborhood. One of our faces, our family engagement, presented in a city council meeting. We presented in community churches in the area, and we are currently sending flyers to all residents throughout a mail delivery service. We attended community events to have a presence in Pahokee, and we have a permanent radio ads offering our services in Spanish, English, and Haitian Creole. Therefore, my ask is that we renew the lease for one more year so we can see what, what we will do in the future. We are looking even today, we sat down and we tried to come up with creative solutions not to close the Pahokee Center. But as it currently stands, we are losing a lot of grant money because we have been currently under enrolled. So my ask to you is to renew our lease for one more year. Any questions?
I have a question. Yes, just curious to know, what are your numbers in Belgrade and South Bay? And how do they, how do they compare to your numbers in Pahokee?
Right now, they are under enrolled as well, but the problem is that we have been under enrolled for the percentages that we put there for the last three years. And the other centers have not been under enrolled for the last three years, it has been just this year. And our teachers and our staff are doing a wonderful job recruiting, but as it stands, the Office of, we are losing a lot of money for the grant because of the last three years of being under enrolled. That's why we, I said that we're looking, still looking for creative ideas not to close the Pahokee Center, but we, the data has been proven for the last three years.
Are there any other centers in Palm Beach County that are in the same predicament as Pahokee is currently?
Yes, we are actually closing different classrooms in different, in different centers where people who, we have classrooms that will close in like six different sites as well.
Okay, are you recruiting actively for Pahokee slots in Belgrade and South Bay?
Yes, we are. Any other question? Okay.
Thank you. For the next one, Mayor?
Yes.
We will now have Mr. Aaron Taylor from One North Lake Development Project provide an update to the Commission and the community regarding the project.
Excuse me, my eyes are not so great, so I need this presentation. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Aaron Taylor, Arc Development Global, here just giving an update for the One North Lake Project. I'll be brief, but since some of the people weren't here the last time I was before you guys, I'm gonna give just a little bit of history, and then I'll go into the progress, and then where we, where we're going looking forward. So you can go ahead and click to the next slide. So the One North Lake Project was actually, it's been going on for more than a decade, and when I got involved about two and a half, almost three years ago, that lot that you're looking at was several different parcels of land that finally got unified into a, through unity of title to make it one lot, and the goal was always to turn it into either mixed use or multifamily, something, to set precedents in the downtown area. So the lot is two acres, it's one point four three net, and it's in the zoning districts of Core, which is commercial, office, retail, and entertainment. If you can go to the next slide, please. This is just a vision of what it looked like when we got it approved last year at the ZAB Board. Actually, let me rephrase that, it was November ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, that we got approved at the ZAB Board for a three-story, forty-unit building. In order to make this a reality, at the time, that project was only about twelve million dollars. When we went before the Board for, they had a couple of RFPs that came out in two thousand and twenty-four to help subsidize some of the funding. Those twelve million dollars is still pretty steep. The county agreed to do it, but under the guise that we provide them more than forty units. We had already been approved through you guys, but they wanted more before we got their support. So we put in an So, we put in an RFP for three point two million dollars. And we were actually, both of my projects actually were the only two projects that got funded the first, approved to move forward the first time around. So, the counties have supported the three point two million dollars. They gave us one year to be considered what they call shovel-ready in accordance with the RFP. That means either you have site control and/or you have zoning approval. Problem is, the other financing arm is not just Palm Beach County, it's HUD. HUD and the county don't agree on quite a few things, and HUD held up the project for like nine months, actually eight. And we didn't really get released to move forward on the fourth floor until October, which only gave me a short amount of time to try to meet the deadline to be considered shovel-ready in their mind. Uh, nonetheless, we did get approved to move forward. And the only thing they asked us to do for some noise level because of the windows along Main Street, they asked the building to be shifted back two feet from what you guys previously saw. It doesn't affect anything as far as your code is concerned, because we were already meeting the setback. We just have a bigger one now from Main Street and a little bit more paved area and landscaping. Go ahead and go to the next slide. This is what the site was going to look like at the three-story, forty units. And this is what was approved, uh, in November, two thousand twenty-three. You go ahead and go to the next slide. This was the site plan that you guys approved. And the reason I show this is because I just want to show you that there's virtually no difference between the site plan that you guys approved and what I have being reviewed through the city right now. Next slide. Is this the next one? There we go. So, if you notice, the building size is exactly the same. The only difference is that we went up a floor and we added fourteen more units. The parking is the same, landscaping is the same, sidewalks are the same. The only thing that they asked us to do was shift the building back. And HUD, for some reason, wanted us to put a generator on site, which wasn't required before. So, you'll notice right behind the dumpster at the east side of the property, there's a little box there for a, an emergency generator for the building. Other than that, everything else is identical. We did have to ask for an additional variance. You'll notice a chart on the bottom left of the plan. Included variances one through five, one through four were approved when we got it approved the first time. The fifth one is only a variance for the parking. We didn't reduce the parking. It's the same amount of parking that was approved before. But we tried getting a cross parking, across, a shared parking agreement with the gentleman to the east, uh, that owns the gym. He was actually for it, but his father didn't necessarily agree. So, uh, unfortunately, that fell apart. The other lots that we had that we were gonna purchase, HUD said they were too far away. They have a distance requirement from the site. And the one that they were going to agree with, um, actually had environmental issues on it. So, it was unfit for HUD to finance this part of the project. So, the only other option was to request a variance from you guys, which your code does allow, through, I believe, ZAB Board approval. So, that's why I'm here to just kind of give you guys an update as to what's occurred and why it took so long. Our final... Wait a second. I just got this email from Jeff Boltman from Palm Beach County. He's saying, uh, basically, the expiration date of the conceptual approval for us to get to the board is on January twenty-ninth for the March eleventh, two thousand twenty-five B C C hearing for final approval. Even though HUD took nine months to get back to us to let us move forward, I know good and well, you guys can't move that fast. What they did ask is that while we're in the review process, if the city could offer just a letter of support that says, you guys are supporting the project, your support has not really changed, and you still plan to somewhat move forward with the project at the next ZAB Board hea, hearing or whatever it is, that they would accept that as us being shovel-ready? And we get to move into the final stages of the three point two million for the project? And a further update is the architect, Alan Wolf from Sokovic. We had already started construction documents before HUD stopped us. And my last correspondence with him, he said they were at ninety percent complete for construction documents. So, once we're approved through you guys and get final approval from them, it's only maybe two or three months to get it into cap and your third-party reviewer to approve it, so. That's where we are. And I just wanted to open it up to any questions, if you guys had any.
Mr. Taylor, you did indicate that there were gonna be an addition of fourteen, sixteen additional units added? And that they require any additional parking other than what you originally had?
No, it did. That's what the, that's why I'm asking for the variance, and that, that's what has to come to ZAB Board. So, the, to modification for all the other things that I mentioned are just administrative review, but the variance part has to go before your board. And we tried to exhaust every possibility, but, um, nobody would even sell the land, nor even we agreed to the gentleman to the east. He didn't have to sell or give up anything. They were willing to pay for the engineering, pay for the parking, do the site plan approval, just give us an agreement that when the building is done, the overflow parking could go on the, what would be his west side of the property. We were close to an agreement, and then, uh, his, his father didn't necessarily agree to move forward, so we were locked out.
Very quick, Mr. Taylor, what was the distance requirement?
I'm sorry?
What was the distance requirement for parking?
Well, originally, he told us five hundred feet. So, we were actually on the other side of, one of the lots we were looking at was on the other side of, um, this isn't North Lake. When you're coming into Pahokee, there's the P N C bank, then there's like this blue building. And then the other side of that, things like a mechanic shop, and there's like two vacant lots over there. And at first, they said it was okay, but then they came back and changed and said that they wouldn't accept it because it was too far away. And that distance, I think they gave us was like two hundred and fifty feet the second time? I can't tell you why, but, um, if you guys know of a property, because we looked around, we, I talked to Noemi, I talked to John Deline. Some of the other properties, to be twenty-two spaces short, you have to remember, it's not just being able to put the parking. Your code requires a specific dimensional requirements for those parking spaces. So, each parking space is eighteen and a half by nine and a half, plus you have to have two foot of overhang. Plus, you have to have twenty-four foot wide drive aisles for, for two-way parking, and you have to have at least a fifteen to twenty-foot turning radius. The lots that you guys do have available on the other side aren't big enough. So, even if they could buy it, they're only getting like two or three, maybe four parking spaces, because you still have to put in your terminal islands, you still have to put in your drainage, you still have to pitch it. And we'd still have to ask for a variance nonetheless, so. We're open to suggestions. If you guys have something available, either that the city owns or that you know somebody's willing to let go of something.
This is just a thought. I mean, we do have property right behind the old Chamber of Commerce that we was looking at for a possible parking garage being built there.
Yes, that did come up, but you guys are planning for a hotel.
Yeah, we're looking at a hotel, and that's a possibility that could be the ho, uh, parking garage built in for the hotel.
So, would the city, you know, if it, if, because we're okay with the condition of approval. If that comes in and you guys are saying, you know, we have to, you know, utilize that as far as our parking is concerned too, is that, uh, like a, a shared parking agreement that you guys would give us? Like now, or would the hotel have to come in first and we'd have to do it with whoever did the hotel?
I, I think the, the conversations that we had previously kind of dealt with, if that scenario played itself out, then we would have to commit to those parking places in perpetuity. And I'm not sure if the city would want to do that, um, even prior to, uh, any development in that area.
Yeah, but that would limit the next developer.
Sure, sure.
Through the mayor, there, there could be a long-term lease that, um, the city could lease it out for a certain number of years. You could, um, where the city is, you know, getting, um, income for it, assuming it's within the, um, the parameter of what the other governmental entity is requiring. So, if it's two hundred and fifty feet, I don't know how, you know, how far this is.
It would definitely need it. It's close enough.
If it is, yeah, the city could potentially lease it. Or a portion of it.
And another idea would be to, if they have the funding, to have them build a parking garage. We would own it or at least lease the land or whatever to generate some income. But we do need to have a parking garage one way or another. The hotel end up being there, they would assume that responsibility of having that garage maintained and generated. Just some thoughts. You all would be in a position to build a parking garage there?
Uh, based on, well, our original budget was twelve million dollars max for this project. When the county asked us to raise it to fifty for units in the third, on the fourth floor, the budget is now seventeen to eighteen million. I don't think it's in the cards at this point for them to be able to fund that. However, it doesn't mean that there's not a collaborative effort that can't happen when you have a developer who's going to put in a hotel who would have to pay for parking anyway, and there's like some sort of shared cost on building out that parking. Because from, from a cost of development planning perspective, just to give you an idea, the civil engineering on the land that was over there to do, I think it ended up being like ninety spaces or something. Just the civil engineering cost to do that was about thirty thousand dollars. Right? And then you gotta build it, and the cost of that per square foot is pretty high. You don't want to incur the cost of doing a design and then building it and then leasing it only to have to have it all torn up to accommodate a garage later on. It, it kind of needs to happen together. So, I, they're amenable to it. I mean, the parking is needed, but there's only so much space you guys have in that downtown area. So, we're up for anything.
Exactly how many parking spaces would you need if, if that property, if something could be worked out on that particular property?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two?
Anybody from the public have a question? I mean, you can, you can go through the rest of the slides if you want, if they just want to see it. But, um, for the most part, I was just trying to show you what was approved, what the county's requesting as a condition, as a condition of their funding, and the fact that the parking and all the other site elements did not change in a negative fashion. So, um, this is what your staff is reviewing now, um, and will hopefully be approving. And when it comes before the ZAB Board, that parking variance is the only one that's being presented.
On the drawing, the little top of the roof, is that say, observation view of the lake, or what was that?
No, so the goal was, and that was the county's position. They said, well, one, they want more units, but two, they thought that the fourth floor would be able to see over the dike. And I kind of voted against it for liability reasons, but there, they actually have a plan to do like a rooftop amenity. And I have a sketch of that, like plans for that from the architect. For insurance reasons, I voted against it, just because people are people. But that was the goal, is that half of that top roof, uh, at the corner of Main Street and One North Lake, like half of that building will be, that, that rooftop will be like a pedestrian amenity. It's like, uh, covered benches, place for people to grill and just like relax, chill kind of thing. So, and I can send that to you. I didn't put it in my package because it wasn't required, but I do have it.
That's it. Thank you. I think we have a, uh, scheduled ZAB Board, I think it's for February eleventh, if I'm not mistaken.
I know it's in February. I didn't remember the date, but I think so.
Yeah, and we've, um, uh, approved, we're, we're in a position to present that letter that you recommended.
Okay.
Uh, for, you know, immediately after that, if it's approved by the ZAB Board.
Let me, let me just, just really quickly through the mayor. What you can do is you can make it that it will be your recommendation or the staff's recommendation, but you don't know yet what the ZAB Board would do, so.
Sure. That's what, that's what the letter states.
That's fine.
Right.
Um, and I, I'd be happy to show you the email and share it with you guys from the county. Just like you guys, we have to have certain things into them because their board hearings are always like a month and a half afterwards. So, the January twenty-ninth deadline is our deadline to give them something that just says, you guys overall are supporting the project moving forward, but it's up to the ZAB Board. Yeah. Thank you.
And our last presenter for this afternoon, uh, will be Mr. McOsslin, who's the chief executive officer of Mental Health America of the Palm Beaches.
Uh, thank, thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Manager. Pull up the presentation, please. I'll go through these slides quick. I'll, I'll just speak to the ones that are relevant to the City of Pahokee and to the residents here. Very quickly, I'll, I'll talk a little about Mental, Mental Health America. So, Mental Health America is a national nonprofit in, in D C. There's a hundred and forty or so local affiliates around the country. We are the local affiliate in Palm Beach County. The national organization was founded in nineteen oh nine. And locally, we've been around since nineteen forty-nine, so we're going into our seventy-fifth year. And for the last two years, we've had a mental health clubhouse out in, uh, Belgrade and serving the residents of Pahokee. So, uh, you can go, go to the next slide. So, uh, Mental Health America was founded on advocacy. So, originally, it was founded by somebody who suffered from a mental health condition. And in nineteen oh nine, the way they dealt with it was they changed it to, to a wall. And so, that person founded Mental Health America in Connecticut. Based on that, locally, we're also founded through family advocacy. Uh, family members who had a loved one that suffered from a mental health challenge came together and became a local affiliate. And so, that's, that's part of our D N A. You know, my generation, I, I had an uncle who was schizophrenic and, you know, constantly hospitalized. And, you know, I'd hear adults talking about it in the living room late at night. What are we gonna do with Uncle Neil? And I, you know, in our generation, that's, that's where it stayed. Nowadays, most of us can say we know somebody who has a mental health challenge or a substance abuse issue. And, uh, the newer gen, the younger generation is a lot more enlightened and, and come, we've come a long way and transparency about, talking about mental health issues. So, the mental health, you can keep going, you, what a clubhouse is. So, out in, in Belgrade, and it's by Crossroads Academy, uh, by New Bethel Missionary. Uh, it's the parsonage. It's the house right next door to New Bethel, uh, is our site out here. And a clubhouse is an evidence-based model. It's been around for the eighties. And people who have a mental health condition can come to that, uh, place. And we're open, it's free. We're grant-funded through state and federal funding. And it's open from eight in the morning to three-thirty, uh, in the afternoon, Monday to Friday, including holidays. Uh, we have a social, um, once a month on Saturdays. Uh, so, people come, they can learn, uh, life skills, uh, employment skills. Part of what our responsibility is, is to help people gain employment skills so they can integrate back into the workforce, should that be something that they would like to do. The evidence, the model requires that we focus on education, employment, really based on what the members' goals are. They want to achieve something with a credential or education-wise, it's our job to help them do it. As an evidence-based model, there's thirty-seven standards we have to abide by that guide how we do that. And part of that is, uh, we refer to, uh, everybody as a member. They're not clients, they're not, um, you know, participants, they're, they're members. You can keep going. So, it is not a clinical model. We're not doing medication management there. People will have clinical services, uh, in the community, and we're usually in tune with that. But you don't need a referral from a doctor. You just need to come and take a tour, and if you want to be a member, you can say you're a member and sign up. We, uh, uh, it's, it's, everything is voluntary. Uh, you know, we don't, we, we structure, so the structure of the clubhouse, because it's employment-based, is to sort of tailored on what a workday would be. So, you get there, and there is a morning meeting with a PowerPoint that's prepared the day before, where people talk about what, uh, they're gonna do, what, what's going on education-wise or employment-wise with somebody, what they may want to achieve, um, that may change day to day. And then they, uh, divide up the tasks in the clubhouse, and the members help run the business of the clubhouse. So, they'll shop, cook, um, plan the meals, uh, maintain the facility. They help us enter billing data, um, which, you know, we have several hours of billing entry a, a week. And so, they help with that. Some people might have an interest in clerical culinary. Many of our members have, uh, you know, family members who are caregivers. Many of our members have, uh, you know, family members who are caregivers, uh, who have been, uh, helping to take care of, uh, somebody who's, who's faced a mental health challenge. And so we, we do have a van that will pick up. Um, we'll come to Pahokee and pick pe- people up on our route and, uh, drop them off as well. And sometimes family members are, are bringing people to the clubhouse too. So, uh, the, the units have, we have a retail unit where, uh, everybody is mimicking what you would do in a retail environment, um, including, you know, stock and inventory, those kinds of things, clerical and culinary. And the clubhouse is something that, you can go to the next slide, cause I think this is, you can keep going. You can keep going. Keep going. Uh, one more. Alright, so there's about three hundred clubhouses in thirty-two countries around the world. So the original clubhouse was, uh, in New York City. Uh, now there's about seventeen in Florida. And it is something that is in, um, in the state appropriation. It is a li- clubhouse is a line item in the state budget. Um, and, uh, we do have funding for our Glades Clubhouse in that, um, appropriation. And we are putting in another appropriation to continue to try to, um, beef up that, uh, what we can do out here. You can go to the next slide. So, yeah, there's Jerusalem, Norway, Japan, Africa. They're, they're everywhere. The evidence-based model, the outcomes are, um, employment, helping people gain employment who may have left the workforce or not have ever really integrated into it fully, even if it's part-time, like ten, fifteen hours a week. And the other big outcome is preventing rehospitalizations, which are costly and, um, traumatic. Uh, so there is a track record of evidence that shows how it helps create stability uh, for folks that might have a mental health challenge. Yeah, so that is the main, uh, piece of, we have other things that we do. Uh, but the main activity we have out here that would, uh, be a benefit to the residents of Pahokee is our clubhouse in Belgrade. Uh, I do have packets for all of you commissioners and, and for you, Mr. City Manager, I'll hand out. We would, uh, thank you to Annie Eifel, uh, for facilitating this and Dr. Jenga for being on our advisory board, um, who does great work in the community too. We do have an advisory board that helps, um, govern and, and promote. We have space, it's free, so if you could get the word, help us get the word out or, you know, just know that we are a resource and these packets will, you know, direct you as to where you can, uh, send people to take a tour and come visit us anytime. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That was our last presenter for the meeting, Mayor.
Next on the agenda is our consent agenda, uh, consisting of the December tenth, two thousand twenty-four city commission meeting minutes and the December seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four city commission special meeting minutes. I'll entertain a motion to, uh, approve their consent agenda items. There are no objections.
My brother moved to accept the consent agenda, December tenth, two thousand twenty-four, uh, commission meeting minutes and December seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four, commission meeting special, um, special meeting minutes. Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Bowden and properly seconded by Commissioner Mike Pearson that will adopt our consent agenda items. Call for questions. Here and now, you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Bowden?
Yes.
Commissioner McPherson?
Yes.
Commissioner Calvin Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Mayor Babb?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Commissioners. Motion passed by unanimous vote. Next we have all business discussion of existing activities or previously held events, if any. City Manager, city update.
None at this time, Mayor.
Thank you. We don't have any public hearings in ordinance. We do have several resolution. Our first resolution would be Resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh one. City Attorney.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pahokee, Florida, authorizing the city manager to execute the twenty twenty-five municipal elections, vote processing equipment, use and election services agreement between the City of Pahokee and Palm Beach County Supervisory Elections in the form attached hereto as Exhibit A, providing for incorporation of recitals, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, City Attorney. City Manager, could you give us a brief explanation?
Yes, Mayor. This resolution establishes an agreement between the City of Pahokee and the Supervisory Elections for the twenty twenty-five, uh, municipal elections, equipment and election services. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you. City Commission, having heard Resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh one, properly read into the minutes by our City Attorney, properly explained by our City Manager, what is your preference?
I move that we accept resolution, I move that we accept Resolution twenty twenty-five oh one.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Mike Pearson and properly seconded by Commissioner Bowden for the adoption of Resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh one. Call for questions. Here and now, are you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner McPherson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowden?
Yes.
Commissioner Calvin Williams? Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Mayor Babb?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Commissioners. Motion passed by unanimous vote. Just a reminder, Resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh two was deleted from our agenda. Now we're moving to Resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh three. City Attorney.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pahokee, Florida, approving legislative priorities for the twenty twenty-five legislative session, providing for adoption of representations, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, City Attorney. City Manager, could you give us a brief explanation of Resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh three?
Yes, sir. Resolution twenty twenty-five oh three, uh, if approved, outlines the legislative priorities for the City of Pahokee for the upcoming legislative session. As you may recall, during the last commission meeting, uh, we received recommendations of, of priority listing recommendations from all the members of the commission. And, uh, staff was able to go back and put those in priority order based on, uh, the recommendations. And we, the listing as a part of your backup was ranked in this order. Marina improvements, Camp Brown repairs and acquisition of cabins, infrastructure improvements, infrastructure improvements to Martin Luther King Junior and Glade Citizen Villa Parks specifically, and Hurricane Harding of the Eighty Rose Gymnasium. Those are the top, uh, five from the rankings that we were able to create from your recommendations. Based on this ranking, uh, next commission meeting, we will have presentations by those that are interested in, in, um, providing lobby service for the City of Pahokee. Uh, there was a need to, according to legals, to determine the priority listing in advance of that.
City Attorney, you have to comment?
Well, it was a recommendation. I wouldn't call it a need, but it's a recommend, it was a recommendation.
City Commission, having heard Resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh three, properly read into the minutes by our City Attorney, properly explained by our City Manager, what is your preference?
Mayor Babb, I move to accept Resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero three.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Bowden and properly seconded by Commissioner Mike Pearson for the adoption of Resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh three. Call for questions. Here and now, are you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Bowden?
Yes.
Commissioner McPherson?
Yes.
Commissioner Calvin Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Mayor Babb?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Commissioners. Motion passed by unanimous vote. Next we have Resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh four. City Attorney.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pahokee, Florida, accepting an emergency agreement with CAP Engineering, Inc., related to construction, engineering and inspection CEI services in conjunction with the contract between the City of Pahokee and the State of Florida Department of Transportation, FDOT, Contract G dash one seven five three reconstruction project as set forth in Exhibit A, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, City Attorney. City Manager, could you give us a brief explanation?
Yes, sir. This agreement, pro- as proposed would, would develop a relationship between CAP Engineering and providing construction engineering and inspection services for the completion of Barfield Highway Reconstruction Project. As you will recall, the, at the last commission meeting, we recommended and was approved for an extension of the Barfield Highway Project. Realize this project has been a longstanding project and what is needed to complete it in order to make sure that all the construction engineering is needed, we are now in a position to have to, um, provide additional construction and CEI services. Uh, the contract administration monitoring, project meetings, review contractor applications, closeout process, including all as-built review and the punch list are contingent upon having these services in place. The services, uh, originally expired, uh, some years ago. There was an extension granted. That extension expired as well. We had a, um, established relationship on the building, uh, side for CAP services. They, um, agreed to do some of this work, basically on a pro bono measure to make sure that we were able to get to this point. But we cannot continue and complete the project without having these services in place.
Just for public trans- being transparent, what is the, our cost that the city would have to bore for this project? Have we determined that?
It's not determined. It's based on the amount of hours needed and there's a paid schedule there attached to the backup information. But we're capping it at no more than fifty thousand dollars. We don't anticipate it to be fifty thousand dollars. But we, we're gonna cap it at no more than fifty thousand dollars. And based on preliminary meetings, we, we really believe that the majority of the projects completed. We were at a point of doing the final lift and doing some other, um, punch items. And we were, um, cautioned to take a look at some of the other things that CAP had made some recommendations on before moving to that stage. Once this-
I think it's like a noise. I don't know if it's a driving in the back. I can't hear anything either. It's like a driving in the background or something. I can't hear anything.
Okay, so, got exactly what I was gonna- Again, just without being repetitive, it's, it'll be capped at fifty thousand dollars and we're under the impression that this will not be a long-lasting project. We've come to the very end of it and this agreement will allow us to schedule the completion within the next two weeks, if not earlier.
Good question. Um, does this at all have any, uh, does it, does it at all affect the Glades Townhome instru- uh, construction?
No, that would be coordinated in a, in a way, just like it was prior, that we would have to coordinate any heavy truck equipment. We're looking to have most of it done at night, if possible. Um, and if that's done at night, that will help minimize the, the impact on any traffic along that way. But we will have working through signalizations and, and some other means through DOT in the city. We'll, we'll try to minimize any impact on that particular, uh, project and all within that area. One of the outreach things that we will do early on is to notify the residents that live there, when the, um, work is, the majority of the paving is being done. Again, trying our best to work around, uh, any heavy traffic or any heavy opportunity there to have an impact.
May I just have one question? Is this fifty thousand dollars in addition to the hundred and oh, um, hundred thousand for the, um, asphalt?
I don't know if I'm understanding your question.
Oh, is this part of the, uh, hundred thousand dollars for the asphalt?
No, no, this, this is separate, Commissioner. Yes.
And what is this for again? Cause I couldn't really hear the phone. So what is this fifty thousand for?
This is for, um, inspection services by CAP government. And this will allow, um, the completion of the program. In order to complete the closeout, we would have to have sign off by a civil engineer inspector. To date, we don't have one on the project. All of those that were built in initially have expired. So this will, on an emergency basis, would allow us to complete the project.
And so this would, that is also, now remember that bucket list that you were talking about? This fifty thousand dollars, is that gonna include, cause I know you said that, um, there might be a bucket list of some things that we need to complete. So when we were saying that was going to take place, who was going to look at the information? Who was gonna look at that bucket list and generate that for us?
That'll be a part, creating the punch list will be a part of the completion of the-
I mean punch list, I'm sorry.
That's okay. It'll be a, um, it'll be developed based on what happens with the final lift. We've identified some items on the punch list, but tho- that item, that punch list item will not be complete, uh, un- until we get close enough to completion, if that makes sense. There are some things that we know that we have to do, but the punch list will give us an item based on the engineering, based on the, um, Russell development and based on the city. If there are some things that are still outstanding, uh, prior to completing the project, we'll make sure those things are resolved. Some of those punch i- some of those punch items-
Can I, I just one question before you finish, Mr. Jackson. Who identified those items? Was that an engineer? Or just to make it sure that we're not paying for something twice, so is that something? If those items were they identified by an engineer or who identified those items that we have so far on the punch list?
Yeah, some were, uh, and we have different le- levels of engineers on the project. We, I mean inspectors on the project. We have some that's specifically for engineering inspection. And then we, we also have engineers that, um, inspect the road and, and walkway, I mean, and sidewalks. So it was a combination of every, of both.
So we just don't have a contract with anybody right now? So the people who identified that, their contract has expired? Is what you're saying?
Yes.
When did it expire?
The original contract expired, I think it was in twenty twenty-three, if I'm not mistaken. And then there was an extension that was provided. Let me look exactly so I can tell you. September of twenty twenty-three.
So when did they identify? I'm just trying to figure out. So when did they identify the items on the contract list? Back then in twenty twenty-three?
No, ma'am. No, they're, they've been most recently identified. And, and again, I'm not sure if you were able to hear much of what was mentioned earlier. But we, we have CAP, um, government as a, um, provide a different service to the, to the, a different level of service to the city. And we were able to get them to look at some of the things that we had some concerns of. And they, they were able to provide input and, and recommendations based on the existing relationship. But this particular, uh, resolution requires specifically, um, civil engineering inspections, of which they have a, a arm of their agency to do that. So we met with them and asked if they would consider, uh, closing this project out, realizing that we needed that service in place in order to close it out.
So I, actually, can I speak, Mayor Bab? I just have another question. I just wanna, you know, get clar- clarification. So when we paid them the fifty thousand dollars, we're paying them, and you're saying they're going to identify the items that we need on the punch list, and those items, because I know we paid for asphalt as well. And so those items are still going to need to be taken care of as well, whatever punch list items that are, that comes up as well, right?
Yes, and, and again, we don't know what those items are. And I think the other part of it is that some of those punch items lists, as developed, may end up being covered by the, the, uh, the grant agreement with DOT. But until they're identified and we're able to request reimbursement from DOT, there's no way of really knowing that. We can't get to that, we can't get to that stage unless we, uh, reengage with the project and have this level of work completed. And, and again, it's not saying that we're gonna spend the entire fifty thousand dollars. We're making, making it available up to fifty thousand dollars. And their fee schedule is based on annual rates per position, which is found in your backup on page seventy-five. The goal is to minimize any and all costs. But again, this is something that we, in order to finish the project, and I think we all, uh, really wanna get this project behind us. And this is the only thing that's preventing it from being completed.
Right, I understand. And I had just had one, um, one more question, um... Okay, my thought, I lost my thought. Like I, I, um, I lost my thought. Oh, um... The... Go ahead. I can't, I can't, I can't remember where I'm coming from.
You can always call me tomorrow. I can call you tomorrow, Commissioner, if you, if you have any additional questions.
Oh, yes, I do. I have, I, it came to mind. So this is going to impact the budget. And I know you said, as a City Manager, you have the authority to, uh, move money around. I guess I'm still gonna ask my question is, how is, where, where in the budget will these funds be moved around? And how will that impact the project that these fifty thousand dollars was allocated for?
Won't be moving any, any money around. We already have money allocated in the road and construction line item that we have in place that could be used up for this particular cost. There's no specific projects that, um, encapsulates entirely of that budget. And there, uh, there is money in bud- in the budget as it stands now, sufficient enough to cover, uh, this request.
I thought this was already in the budget for this specific item, or you're saying it's big?
No, not specifically for this item, uh, but anything road and road construction related that may come up during the fiscal year.
You're done on that item, Mr. Jackson?
Yes, sir. I'm done.
That would move to new business presentation of City Manager.
We're gonna require a vote. Yeah, we need a vote on this item.
Final Resolution rate twenty twenty-five dash oh four?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Was the motion already made?
No.
No.
I move that we accept Resolution twenty twenty-five oh four.
Second. It has been moved by Commissioner Mike Fearsen and probably second by Commissioner Bowden that we adopt Resolution twenty twenty-five oh four. Call for questions. Hearing the honor, you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner McPherson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowden?
Yes.
Commissioner Calvin Williams? Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you Commissioners. Motion passed by unanimous vote. At the record show that Vice Mayor Mervin has entered the chamber in person. Thank you. Next we have new business presentation by the City Manager of activities of upcoming events, if any. Discussion and direction of the restaurant and marina that Commissioner Mike Fearsen wanted on agenda. Commissioner, uh, move to the City Manager at this time to present that item.
Okay. Yes, sir. And, and in previous meetings and conversations, uh, I've explained that the ultimate goal for, and my recommendations would be to have the, the campground, marina, and restaurant outsourced to, um, a management company that can adequately provide the services and skill sets to successfully make the, get the maximum results from, from that, uh, from those facilities. As it stands now, we have a skeleton, uh, crew, uh, that's there working and operating. And nothing against them, but they just, the skill sets and the wherewithal to, to do that is not in place. So I will be recommending, um, the management of the campground and marina to be outsourced to a expert organization that have those skill sets to, uh, to provide the proper boating, uh, opportunities. There, provide the actual resources that we have there. There's now underutilized and not utilized at all, case in point. Obtaining gas for boats that come to the, to the marina right now. We don't have the, we have the equipment and the, um, tools there, but we don't, we, that, that's not being available right now. So ultimately, I think we get the, the big, at least for now, we'll get the, the better result for those facilities in, in terms of generating revenue to sustain and maybe even, uh, put the city in a surplus situation. That was one of the things that continually come up during audits, is that the marina and the cemetery are running at a deficit. So my recommendations within the next, um, three months, come to you in a, in a proposal for an RFQ and RFP to solicit companies to operate and manage those facilities.
And I would totally agree with the outsourcing of those items, uh, but the only concern I would have is, uh, lumping all three together. I would do the marina and campground as one RFP and the, and the restaurant separate.
Yes, sir.
If I was to have-
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's, that's the goal.
I have a question about it. When we lease, uh, uh, have those type of contracts, what's the financial benefit for the city when we do that? Because I got, have some other ideas. I just wanna know, as far as the financial benefit at, for, for the city when we do that. Because a lot of times when we lease our projects, uh, when we lease those type of facilities, that leasing company makes the money and we get minimum. The city gets minimum amount.
I can think that goes, it was a very, very good question. I, I can't speak to what has happened in the past, uh, Commissioner. But my goal and my process would be a, a revenue sharing, um, arrangement that will allow the city, within means to, to have an opportunity to benefit from a revenue standpoint. Realizing that there is a balance, uh, but the city would not be in a, um, in a deficit position if, if, if that, uh, becomes a reality. So revenue sharing is, options are, will be a highlight and a high point of, of what I bring to you in terms of recommendation.
Okay, and my next thing, just, um, I, I have a, a recommendation that I would, would like to entertain. I'm thinking if we can, and I don't know how we can do it legally, and maybe the attorney can give us some directions on it. But I was thinking of something like a, if we can get like a wing stop, a Buffalo Wild Wing in partnership. I don't know if the city can endeavor in those type of things. But, and my reasoning for saying that, we would be, the city would be owner of the restaurant as well as, uh, providing the different, um, service and the, the revenue. The majority of the revenue will go back to the city, but I don't know all the legalities of that. And even with the, um, marina and campground, um, now I know the, um, financial burden of getting that is gonna be, we, we may have to select funding to get that, but if we can, because I'm looking for self-sustainability. Because what's happening when those leases end or, and, and, and if there is a lease, the financial benefit as far as, um, what we'll be receiving for the city. But I, I was thinking about ownership of like a Buffalo Wild Wing or Wing Stop or something of that nature. But I don't know. We have to look at the legalities of it.
If you're looking for me to respond, um, well, what you're talking about is those are franchises?
Yes, that's what, that's exactly what.
And so you would have to, you know, fall within their requirements for franchise? It could require, uh, modification of the existing building. It could require a number of different things. And, um, but typically, um... Revenue sharing agreements, yes, cities, you see that with municipalities. I have not, um, and I would certainly research, um, uh, once you, once the manager identifies, if he were to identify a place that fell within the parameters of what you're describing, we would, you know, obviously see whether they would have an interest, and I guess that's the first thing. You don't generally see franchises in, in government, unless it's within a shopping plaza and there are lease provisions where people are leasing from the city, but the city owns the, you know, plaza. So, but there may be a number of different, um, scenarios that can fall within what you're describing. And I think it would just be a case-by-case basis based upon the facts. So those kind of things are very fact-specific.
One of the reasoning I'm thinking on that line, because if you get a franchise, those, that franchise is gonna make sure that business is ran according to their policies and they're gonna protect themselves. And that would, you know, help with the sustainability for one thing, and would know that everything would be... But I know everything depends on what a type of management you may have in that situation. But that was one of my reasoning for thinking along, along those lines. I'm just trying to be innovative and think outside the bounds, and some things that we might be able to do to try to be self-sustainable as a city.
I, I, um, I would definitely research that as well, uh, to see the viability of that. But I will remind you, I know you know very well, any and everything that's, uh, ultimately approved would have to receive the approval of the State of Florida as well, I guess even initially. And the goal is not to, uh, go into a relationship that's lasting forever. Ideally, I would like the city to be in a position, once, uh, some things get in place, revenues develop, revenue streams are increased, that we can get to a point where we can actually run and operate those facilities as a city. But as it stands now, we're, um, we're, we're needing to be able to at least get started with something. And I see this as a get started with something, first step, with the ultimate goal, uh, becoming self-sustained as a city. But I, I will research that angle and if there's any others, uh, we definitely research those as well.
Great, thank you. And now we're moved to the Mayor's Report, which would be very brief. I would just like to thank everyone for all their hard work, and I'm talking about city staff and, uh, this artist and other transition that we have been, uh, going through. Just wanna thank you for your hard work and dedication to the City of Pahokee. For the public, I hope everyone had a happy holiday season, uh, that include Christmas. And I may even include Thanksgiving in there too, because it's holiday season. Thanksgiving, Christmas, and now the New Year. Also wanna mention that last week was law, uh, law enforcement, uh, appreciation week. Wanna thank, uh, PBSO staff for their hard work and dedication in keeping us safe and secure. I also wanna thank Lieutenant Kushner for his sharing of activities that's happening as far as law enforcement in this community. A lot of times, we as a City Manager, even Commissioners, uh, have inquiries about what happened. You know, I understand there was a shooting or some type of major incident. He has been such a help in letting the city know what's going on in our community. We never had that much, uh, communication from law enforcement before. So I just wanna thank him for that and appreciate him for doing that. He makes sure that his staff share information quickly with him. Not only so he'll know what's going on, but to be able to share with us. For some reason, no matter what go on in this community, the public seem to want to know. And something we can share with you when a situation like that, uh, happens. So I just, I'm just so happy that we have him as our commander in this area for, for the City of Pahokee. Couldn't do it without you. We thank you so much, Lieutenant, for that.
Thank you. Y'all work together.
Yeah, thank you. And that will include my report. Next we'll have the City Manager, report of the City Manager.
Yes, I have a few things, Mayor. I wanna, um, remind the community, announce that the Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Day Celebration is scheduled for, uh, the Saturday, January eighteenth. It's the lineup at ten AM at MLK Park and the extravaganza to begin immediately thereafter, twelve-thirty to two, at the actual MLK Park. Uh, I will say that the, the entrance, the, the en- uh, interest for both the parade and the extravaganza is very, very low. Uh, we've already got approval and everything is in place for the parade. And we've worked from a staff standpoint real hard to make sure things are in place. But the community is not really responding. That's not to say that it won't happen, but just to give you, just letting you know that the, uh, application process has been very, very low. Uh, and the cutoff was yesterday for that. I have some ideas and, and Vice Mayor and myself talked about, maybe ideally in a perfect world, that we could have one tri-city event sometime soon. I think our event is scheduled for the eighteenth. The other two cities are scheduled for the nineteenth and the twentieth. So we have three MLK events con- in consecutive days. And all three communities are depending upon some of the same participants, the bands, the churches, uh, the vendors. And I'm not sure if we're seeing here in Pahokee the first, um, indication of that, that that maybe too, too many ask for a, a region that's just as small as ours for three different events. I just wanted, again, to make sure that you were aware of that. Uh, Parks and Recreation, we had bid openings for, uh, roof repairs and on this last Friday. And we had a, a respondents to respond, and we're in the process of reviewing the final bid documents for that. And hopefully that'll go to permitting within the next couple of weeks. We're not as successful on the Phase Four funding. We did not have any respondents for that project. And I'll, I'll give you my view on why that might be the case. There's the funding that's available for that Phase Four project, um, resurfacing project is, is not really substantial enough to have bidders, um, knocking our doors down to get that job done. What I envision is probably looking at a different or a combination of procurement options that we may, may be able to get someone in to get those, uh, the resurf- the resurfacing project complete and not have to continue to hope that someone will, will bid on a project of that nature. The other thing that I wanna bring up and mention, uh, I mentioned it at the very beginning of the meeting. Uh, I have considered the, the Commission's, uh, position and, and recommendation on, uh... uh, I have considered the, the commission's, uh, position and, and recommendation on, uh, uh, annual contract for me, and I, I am in a position at this point to accept the, the recommended contract from previous meetings, and the goal, my goal is to have that for your consideration at the January twentieth commission meeting, for your recommendation and hopeful approval. And that's it, that's it for my report.
And we move to the report of the city attorney, if any.
I think Ms. Carolyn Williams had a question.
He said he'll have the, um, for the, for the contract, did we go back and put the information in in regard to the, um, disability? If the contract comes back, will it come back with that information in there that I, um, that we spoke about at a previous meeting in regards to disability or something happened? That that wasn't in the contract, and I would like to see that in the contract?
Yes, I think those, those, um, the men has captured that, and I agree to what was recommended there. So when you, when it comes back, that all of that, that language should be there.
Next, we move to the report of the city attorney.
Uh, no report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Next, we'll have, uh, discussion on future agenda items of commissioners, if any. And I'll start with Vice Mayor Merv and work with yourself to the left.
I have none, yeah.
Thank you. Commissioner Bolden.
I have none.
Thank you. Commissioner McPherson.
Yes, uh, it was brought to my attention, we have two Little League teams that, um, won the Super Bowl, and I would like to put it on the agenda that we do a proclamation or something recognizing them, um, for their accomplishment. I know in the past, we, um, did something for the, uh, youth that won. I think it's the ten and nine, the eight and nine and the ten and nine, but I'm not, I'm, don't quote me on that, but I know that there was at least two teams, and it was brought to my attention.
Yes, sir. Parks and Recreation, they're in the process of finalizing their awards banquet. And in conjunction with that, we'll, we'll have a resolution, um, recognizing, honoring their success this year as well.
Okay.
And I'll provide, that, that date once it's confirmed and finalized.
Uh, yes, I would like, the, the boards that we put in place, can we have that on the agenda so we can get some updates on those, um, where we are with meetings and different things like that?
Okay, and each board is different, but the, the challenges that we're having is getting applicants to apply for those boards, you know, I'll give way to city clerk at any point. But, um, we've advertised, we, we have it on our website. I think, uh, the commission has made recommendations for specific boards, but if there are other recommendations that you can make, uh, we would definitely appreciate having those. It becomes very, um, difficult to have it on the agenda when you don't have, uh, members to complete a board. So the only time that we're really gonna, I'm, I'm suggesting that we bring it back as once we're confirming those people that are agreed to join those boards.
The boards I'm specifically talking about, the ones that we actually appointed that are actually in place, I know if we don't have, um, the particular boards that's not filled yet, they can't have a meeting unless they have a point. But the ones that do have, uh, the appropriate members that, that was appointed, could we get a, an update on those? And as for us, the board that I'm on, the, um, for the, um, the contract that we, we signed with the auditor, that he gave us an update at the last meeting. So, and I think that's.
Okay. Ms. Clark, do you mind kind of explaining how meetings are determined from those exist, from those boards? It's just not having a meeting. I think the meeting would have to be recommended either by the liaison that's serving from the commission or the commission itself.
Um, yes, that is correct. So, um, in reference to the Parks and Rec Recreation Board, that is as needed. And there are specifics inside of the code that tells what would require a meeting or what would, um, initiate a meeting. So until that takes place, there wouldn't be a meeting.
Okay, it's, it's as needed, I think, well, I, I don't know if that was that particular board, but I know some of the boards have, uh, certain date, uh, dates and stuff that they had in the, um, codes that they were supposed to meet, but I'm not sure on that particular board.
Yeah, so most boards right now are inactive. We don't have enough applicants to, uh, move forward with those. And my last memo to you guys were on October twenty-fourth, and nothing has changed since that date.
And the Parks and Recreation Board, I thought we had enough on there, we had five.
Yes, that is, that, that is correct. We have enough, um, to have a meeting, but our code states what would, what would initiate a meeting, and so until that takes place, there wouldn't be one. So anything that comes up with our liaison, the city commissioner or the city manager, then we'll have a meeting.
Okay, well, what are, well, what are those specifics that would cause that meeting? Because the reason I'm asking that, even like, um, uh, the city manager was talking early, was talk, excuse me, was speaking earlier, and he was talking about the lack of participation. We might need to look at the way that we approach things to get our citizens more involved. And even with that, I, I'll wait to my comments to address that, but we might need to try more, a more of a personal approach, but I'm getting off topic off this now, I'll bring that up in my comments.
Okay, so as it pertains to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board pursuant to Section two dash one sixty-two, subsection D of the city's code, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board shall assist in the planning of city recreational and playground sites, activities, plans, capital improvements, guidelines, programs, and any other matters at the request of the city commissioner or the city manager. So that makes it as needed based on those things. So once anything comes up that you guys want to discuss in those parameters, then that's when a meeting will take place.
Well, I'd like to make a, I'd like to make a recommendation that, um, we have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we already have, um, for the Martin Luther King Park, that we need to make, that board need to have a meeting, and so we can start getting some directions, or at least come up with some type of plan so we can, um, start spending that money. I know that's not gonna be enough to do what we want to do, but, uh, we have on our legislative priorities that we're gonna be, that's one of our priorities. And I think it's kind of, how do I put this? We haven't spent the money that we already have, and we're asking for more, more money.
Point well taken, Commissioner, and I, I completely agree with you. But, um, just to make sure that we're, we're, we're talking apples and apples, the monies that you're, uh, referencing for MLK, there's already a defined scope of service for those. So we, unless we go back and, and ask for an amendment to that scope of service, then we kind of tie it to what can happen with those grant dollars. Any future dollars, if, in terms of the legislative priority that we've outlined, outlined, and that's one of those for this legislative session, we can kind of, uh, develop prior to any agreement, uh, a wish list or develop a, a tentative scope of work or, or scope of services that we would like to see included over and above what we've already been granted for, unless there's a rationale to extend what we've already been granted for.
And, and maybe that can be brought to that committee and, you know, to bring back before the, trying to look at, even look at those things, and if we need to amend them to do what we need to do with the money. I'm just thinking outside of the box, more.
Yes, sir.
Um, I'll make a comment on that. Um, Ms. Clark, uh, as far as the ethics forms that have been completed for that board, have all of them been submitted?
Um, no.
Okay, so we can't start until all of the ethics forms are submitted?
I would advise that they submit it. They had a deadline within sixty days of appointment to complete those forms.
Okay.
I won't say that it would impede the ability to move forward, but it would be better to have all of those so that they know what is expected.
So how many, you said all of them have not been submitted, how many more do we need?
Maybe about one at this point.
We need one more form submitted, okay.
Yeah.
Would you be able to call that person just as a reminder?
Well, both, her, both her and I have made several attempts, but we'll, we'll, we'll take a more personal approach and get that, get that done.
Have suggestion, call the meeting, have the forms at the meeting, and they sign the me, the forms prior to us having the meeting.
It's only one person, we'll, we'll get person, we'll personally do.
They have to actually complete a training, it's not filling a form.
Ms. Cowans, Williams, do you have any, uh, future agenda items that you'd like to present?
Um, I would like for future agenda items to be the evaluation tool that we've been asking to look at what we already have to come up for the weekend. We agree on what we would like final evaluation tool to look for the, uh, city clerk and the manager. I would also like for the future agenda item to come up again with this, um, that has been asked in regards to outsourcing the cemetery, um, if Mr. Jack Lincoln Green, he was gonna bring us that information on if we can do that or not, and, um, the Henderson Fund, so that we can see, he was doing some research to see what we can and can't do, so if that can go on the next agenda.
I'm, I'm in the process, I'm, I'm in the process of gathering that information, so I, I can't commit to the next meeting, but I will tell you that it's something I've been working on, and it will be coming to a future agenda item. I mentioned earlier that we, the direction for, um, I'd be recommending for the Marina Campground and Restaurant is very similar to what I'd be recommending for the cemetery. I, I referenced the cemetery in my comments earlier, but that is one of the other items that I'm, I'm considering, or will be recommending outsourcing for the same reasons. Not having enough staff, not having enough equipment and supplies to properly manage and maintain the cemetery has been something that's been a, a challenge for years. And, uh, since being here, I've, um, taken a look in different approaches on how the city could actually continue to manage and maintain that without running a, a, an annual deficit. And I have not had any success in coming up with anything that can be, uh, managed and controlled by the city from a management standpoint. So that, that's definitely one.
Have you found out whether we can even do it or not?
Yes, yes.
Explain the Henderson Fund to us?
Yes, we can, we can do it.
So at least if you can, so at least if that information can come back to us, so we can have that information to even know if we can move forward, that's what I'm asking.
I'm telling, I'm telling you.
If we even do it, and I know you're gonna look at the Henderson Fund, I know you wanna do what you're saying you're doing, but at least can we get to that point first?
It, it's all, it's all, um, relative, Commissioner. It's all, we can't separate one without the other. I've been working and researching it, and again, I'll be very, I'm very close into bringing it back to the commission. And to answer your question, it can be done, and I've been working real hard on seeing how best we, uh, get that done and make it a reality. I referenced earlier that within the next three months, I, I intend to bring all of those, um, outsourcing, uh, recommendations to the commission.
Okay, my, the next, I only have two more. Um, I've gotten the policy and looked at on the policy for the city vehicles, if we can look at that. I don't know if we can even have a workshop, but, um, there are some coming up that I saw that I thought that I would like for some recommenda- recommendations for that, and on the features of the, uh, city facilities, if we can bring those two back and at least have a workshop and look at those. Um, there were some recommendations I think that would be good for the city that to go in with those two policies.
Okay.
Okay, we're gonna take these one at a time, so we need to vote on which one would be added to the future agenda items. Uh, give me your first one, uh, Commissioner.
Um, the first one was, uh, evaluation tool for the city clerk and the city manager. Um, bring in what we have, and so we can come up with an evaluation tool.
Okay, first of all, we're gonna have to do a workshop initially to be able to give input on the tool. Then I guess our city clerk from that point will generate the document to bring back to us of the city man, through the city manager to vote on it. So.
Okay, I'm trying to get it, but we've been asking for this since, um, for, for since October.
Could, for, for clarity reasons, can you, can you hear, can you hear me, Commissioner?
Yes.
For clarity reasons, we've, um, I'm not sure exactly what you're asking for different this time, but we've provided the evaluation tubes that the city has used in previous years and with updates within the last three or four months, two, on two different occasions. So exactly what it is that you're looking for this time.
For the, for the commission to look at it as a whole and vote on it, to make sure this is the evaluation tool that we want to use.
Okay.
So the commission want to have the evaluation tool added as a future agenda item, uh, so we can critique it, make any recommendation for changes on any of the, uh, evaluation items?
Mayor, without being repetitive, you already have that. We've provided that twice already. So I guess what will help me and staff is that if you have some recommendations, if you can provide those recommendations, we could, uh, incorporate those recommendations based on what we have existing and in your recommendations, and then bring, bring the comprehensive look back to you for a final decision, as opposed to, as opposed to.
I'm asking that we do it as a commission. I'm not asking that we submit one by one. I'm asking as a commissioner that we do it together as a commission, and I ask it to submit it one by one.
Okay, Commissioner, I'm not suggesting that you're asking that. What I am saying is that we've provided that, that tool, the only tool that we have now to use as the evaluation tool. You're suggesting that we change that, if I'm not mistaken, or you have recommendations to change that?
I'm suggesting that what we have already, if we come together as a commission, so look at what we have, because one tool can't be used from the city manager and the court together, because they both have different responsibilities. So I'm asking as a commission that we can come together and look at what we have so that we can make sure that we have a evaluation tool that fits two different jobs.
What we need to do again is have a workshop on it. If we're gonna come together as a commission to discuss any recommendation of changes to that tool.
Okay.
We need a workshop. That's what she basically should be asking, that we have a workshop.
I have a question. So if we're gonna do a workshop, um, are we also to have some form of job analysis so we actually know what we're looking at and evaluating them based on? Do we understand really all of the knowledge, skills, and abilities that are associated with their jobs respectively? As to, it, it, and that would allow us to actually evaluate them effectively? You have to know what you're looking at in order to truly evaluate someone effectively. So is this to con, is this to include a job analysis for both the city manager and clerk position? That's my question.
When, when you say job analysis, I mean how?
Analyzing all criteria by which we will evaluate them based on. Evaluations are based on a set criteria. Do we know what those criteria are? Are we gonna analyze that criteria? Because the evaluation is based on that.
We can have a workshop, and we can get all of those answers in the workshop, bring on proper documentation, their job description, their job duties, and we're gonna create a tool for getting answered all these questions, I think, in a workshop.
So we're not, we're creating a tool, or we already have them?
He's already provided, he's already provided the, um.
So the workshop is about.
We're just, I'll vote down for Mr. Bolden. I'm just asking if he provided it, but that doesn't necessarily mean that I agree with it. I'm just saying as a commission, that's all I'm asking.
My question is. Do we know what we're looking at to evaluate? I'm asking if we're going to have a job analysis where we actually understand what we're looking at to evaluate them? Is that to be included in the workshop, is my question?
Based on the job descrip, on the job description.
You used to evaluate the last city manager in the last court, Mr. Bolden, and maybe you can give us some insight on it and help us with that in the workshop, with what you used, what you all used in the last three years.
Absolutely, I'm familiar. I am a psychologist, yes, master level, I know what I'm looking at.
I don't know about anybody else, but I think I'm capable of looking at the job description and those things that we don't think apply to the city manager, um, to be able to. Um, to be able to amend them, uh, remove them and, and, and curtail them according to the job description. Um, and I think, oh, we making this more difficult than it, it really is. We just need to look at, have a workshop on it. Review what we currently have in place, make whatever amendments and recommendations, let it go through the attorney to review. And then we come up with our final plan.
And that was what I was saying. For educational purposes, for us to know what we're looking at, are we going to include that was my question? For our education, are we going to include that form of analysis of criteria by which we are evaluating them? That was my question. Are we gonna include that in the workshop?
Yes.
Thank you. That's it.
Okay. We all together to do, we wanna establish a workshop date for that particular item. And I would suggest that we do it on the odd Tuesday that we don't have a regular commission meeting. You know, it's just a suggestion. So we're currently meeting on the second and fourth, so we either need to look at the third, first or third Tuesday of, say, next month. Or the previous month, whatever we agree on to be available to participate in the workshop.
Well, we'll check, we'll check dates, uh, with the commission and be able to give you a, uh, find a date hopefully within the week, if not.
Okay. Commissioner Williams, what, what is the next, uh, item that you wanna suggest?
We have to vote on it. We have to vote.
We have to vote on everything, yeah.
You have to vote on the workshop?
The city manager with the clerk will call and find out what date that we will be available for a workshop. And the date that's the majority of us, if not the total group, will be able to come to a workshop. So they'll bring that back, the date that we actually, uh, have agreed on. And it's gonna either be a first or third Tuesday of a month. And we'll try to do it as soon as we can possibly get the group together to be able to do it.
Next one was to bring the policy. I wanted to look at the policy on the use of the city vehicle. I know the policy came to us, but when I got the policy, I didn't have time to read it. It's time to go through it. So also, uh, I, I don't, in regards to the policy on the city vehicle.
Okay. What, what we could do on that, we'll just come have two, well, we're not gonna have two individual workshops. We can do it combined, have those two items, if this commission agree that this is something that they wanna vote on to have. That added to our workshop. I just wanna make sure we're doing it in the proper manner to make sure that we have a consensus that a workshop is required or warranted by the commission, at least a majority. So if I would, we'll take a vote on adding, if the commission agree, to add to our next workshop. Which will include the items for the evaluation of the city manager to include.
And clerk.
And clerk. Do y'all think that's gonna be too much? We're looking at two different, uh, items. Do you think we can do that in one workshop or you wanna separate them?
I think we can do it.
Okay, we're gonna try to do it if the three or more agree to it.
But I still have another one. It's another policy, Mayor Bad, I want to put, that wasn't the last one. The second one was the, in regards to the facilities. The rental facilities. I want to look at that policy as well.
So you're probably gonna have with two, two separate workshop. I would recommend doing one with the evaluation piece. And then the second one combining the policies of vehicles and facilities.
Okay.
And we'll do the same. We'll, we'll get some dates for your consideration for that second workshop as well.
Okay, let's, let's make sure we're voting on having the workshops for it, just like we would vote to add some to a future agenda item. To make sure that the majority may don't think is a great idea, but I think majority probably will. Uh, you wanna take role on that, that having a workshop, both workshop, one gonna be combined with. The policy on the vehicles and.
Facilities.
The facilities.
I have one, it's three that, Mayor Bad, that I have.
You.
And the third one is on, um, if we can look at the current policy on what we have for dilapidated buildings, uh, buildings that are unused. I would like to look at that policy and make.
Yeah, let's, 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 let's take what we have now and then at the next meeting, just add that. For another workshop or whatever you're looking for. We don't wanna do an overload and don't wanna have just one individual, uh.
Okay.
Yeah, we're just gonna make sure we spread it out a little so we don't burden everyone with too much.
I'll follow you guys from there. Get that, well, okay.
Okay, so you're gonna, we're, we're gonna vote on these two. The first one is the evaluation tool. We're gonna have that separate in the next workshop, if voted upon, would be the evaluation of the, the rental agreements and. What was the second?
Vehicles.
Vehicles use. Let's take the first and. Do the commission agree to have a workshop on the evaluation of the city clerk and the city manager, the tool that we will use? Include in.
Job analysis.
The job analysis discussion to make sure we have what we want to have in there, uh, understanding of it. So we can properly evaluate the two individuals.
I move that we have a workshop, I agree to have a workshop on those two agenda items.
Second. The move by Commissioner McPherson and second by Commissioner Bolden. Call for questions here and now. Let's take a vote on it. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner McPherson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Commissioner Cowan Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Mayor Bad?
Yes.
You motion for the two items, which two did you?
The, um, that was the, uh, performance evaluations, the first one.
Okay. Everyone understood that, what we've voted on, okay. Now the second workshop would be combined to include the.
Vehicle policy and the facility.
Facility agreement. Roll call on that, Madam Clerk.
We need a second, I mean, I'll give a second for that.
Let's have a motion.
I'm gonna have a workshop for facilities and vehicle policy.
Okay.
Second.
The move by Commissioner Bolden and proper second by Commissioner McPherson, that we have another workshop dealing with the vehicle policy and the facility agreements policy. Call for questions here and now, are you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Commissioner McPherson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cowan Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Mayor Bad?
Yes.
So we'll be calling other city managers slash city clerk, whichever will be calling the commission to determine the Tuesday that we'll be having. Both of those workshops on, not at the same time, but separately. Okay. Now we have, uh, Commissioner comments. No, I'm sorry. General comments of the public.
Agenda items, uh, what about the ones that I recommended about the boards and the, uh, and the, uh, well, he said he was gonna bring the, um, recommend, the, um. Recognizing the, um, football team, but he's gonna bring, take care of that and get that back to us. But the, um, the boards and stuff, we never, uh, what was the decision on that? I know the only thing is we need to get that one person's, um, signature and as far as the, um, ec, the ethics, go through the ethics training.
I'll make sure personally that's done by the next commission meeting, personally.
That said, if I had your request of.
No, I want to go on, I, I need them, well.
What are you requesting though?
What's the update? Have they met? Well, apparently they haven't met because they haven't signed all the ethic point. Just trying to get an update on where we are. Because sometime I think we discourage our citizens when we put them on boards and then we don't meet and they don't, and they. But that's, that's what I'm getting from them.
The commission is looking for a discussion on boards. I'm trying to get it clear though, but.
Well, we gotta just get the ethics training done first on that one person that.
Let me make, let me make a recommendation based on the city's code, because we, again, we wanna make sure that we're all singing from the same sheet of, of, of paper. It's one thing to get people to apply for the boards, but there are steps in between the application process and actually moving to become a full and functioning board. Uh, some of that was explained through the clerk a minute ago, but I think our biggest challenge, and there, there, there are multiple, to get more community involvement. Um, is to initially get the interest for people joining boards. High level of apathy for a lot of different reasons, but we're working on that. And we're hoping with your assistance that we can encourage people to apply for the boards. Once they apply, uh, and what's been my understanding since being here, we've had people to apply and fill one particular board. But eighty percent of them didn't complete the required training in order to become, or what we would like to. For them to fully understand what's involved from an ethical standpoint and some of the other things. And we've made countless attempts, uh, through staff and I think some, some of you may have even reached out and encouraged that they come in and participate. I've seen countless emails going out to individuals, encouraging them to come, giving them the timeline associated with application process to complete a new training. And that's been a real challenge to get them to that second step. I think if we're able to successfully, let me rephrase it. I think when we're able to successfully do that, then we can be in a position where we fill in the boards and becoming active. And then becoming a, a meaningful part of the community. But we're gonna need your help. Staff will continue to do as much as we can do. I think a workshop would probably be a benefit. To kinda just explain that to the community and kinda reiterate some things that, from a staffing standpoint, that we need to make sure in place. Cause I'm not sure what has happened historically, but we have the code to follow in order to make sure that we're operating in a way that. Everyone is gonna be, uh, pleased and proud of.
Okay, let me just say this. When I, when I come with things, I try to come with resolutions. Would it be proper to call the meeting? And, well, the ones that have, well, that still won't be feasible, but I'm thinking that you go through the ethic training and I'm, uh, the, the way I think may be hindsight. That I would have recommended that call a meeting with that committee. When they come, that meeting basically is gonna be doing your ethics training. That should have been your first step, getting all the proper documentation signed and, and I'm not putting blame in this on anybody, but I'm just trying to. Come with resolutions to, you know, reaching out to our community and stuff and try to help move things along a little bit better, a little smoother. You know, that would have been the first step. Hey, we know they gotta do the ethics training, let's call a meeting. And that would, that particular meeting, that's basically what that meeting would be about. And then, and then even in that session, you do a teaching block where you, they, when they going through the ethics training, their do's and their don'ts of what. Their, you know, what their responsibilities are as that particular committee. And I'm just trying to bring resolutions to our problem, because a lot of times I think we shoot ourselves in the foot when we try to put things in place, when I ask people to get on committees. And we don't follow up, whether I make sure and ensure that they have proper, uh, that they have meetings. I'm on a committee and I never have a meeting, I'm gonna lose interest. I don't wanna be a part of that. I want, if I'm gonna be a part of something, I wanna be like, at, at least know that my ideas are being heard, that I bring something to the table, um, if I volunteer for something.
I think we're both saying the same thing, but we gotta get them here.
Yeah.
And we talked about workshop, but workshop versus town hall. We do have a standing policy where we was. Ask to have town halls, at least quarterly, so part of that information to get out to the public, we can put that on the town hall. That we can share with the community, encourage them to participate in our boards and what would be the guidelines to receiving board qualification. Uh, that mean you have to fill out an application and have to be voted on by the majority of the commission. You have to be trained in certain area, ethical, whatever. Now you board certified, you ready to go. But I would also suggest too, the majority of these boards, they need to meet. Some standing boards where you don't need to meet monthly, but on average, if you want their input and their participation, boards need to meet on a monthly basis. They need to have a scheduled month, a date, just like the commission, say this first Tuesday of each month. I'm just using that as example. The recreation board meet at six o'clock at wherever they place they're gonna meet, whether here or wherever. But we need to get in that frame of mind. I know we have the code that dictate this particular board on the meets when necessary or needed. But I'm just saying those that don't have that requirement, we wanna try to encourage monthly meeting to get their input, their recommendation, their thoughts and their, uh, mindset.
If I may.
And to my understanding, I think one of those requirements was as recommended by the commission.
If I may. So, just as it is hard to get them to respond to code of eth, ethics trainings, it's just as difficult to get them to participate as well. So the same issues that we may have with getting them to respond, even just for something as simple as the code of ethics trainings. Those are some of the problems we face with even getting them to participate or be responsive, uh, be responsive. So it's not a matter of, you know, we're not trying to have them to meet. But it, it, it just goes across the board. And then there are not many boards that are active.
Right.
A lot of boards are inactive, it's on like three boards that are.
And that's why we're talking about the town hall meeting include board establishment and that, so the public can know what needs to happen. To be able to participate on the board and not only just say you wanna be part of the board. We want you to be able to attend meeting, to training and everything that associated with being a board member. You know, a board is really a prestige responsibility for our residents and they need to know that we feel that way. And hopefully they feel the same, you know. People just don't get on board appointments just because they act. These are people you normally in the community doing things on behalf of the city and trying to help it grow and move forward. And we want them to understand that and have that same, uh, thought pattern that I have a responsibility now. I've been appointed to be on the board. I need to participate in the training of these boards, the meetings that they have to be really acted.
I'll say, I, I. I think that in terms of motivating people to, to, to participate, to join.
Commissioner Cowans.
Commissioner Bolden had the floor, Commissioner Cowans.
She can't, she can't hear, she's not.
But were they told, do they know where they're supposed to go at to take the ethics training when they're.
Yeah, Commissioner Ca, Commissioner Cowans.
I need to talk into the mic.
Um, yes, ma'am.
So, just so that I know, someone had the floor and we'll come back to that question.
Commissioner, Commissioner Bolden had the floor and Mayor Bad will come back to it.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear, I'm sorry.
I'll just say, um, you know, we, we have to honestly kinda take a look at ourselves, not just this commission. Motivation is important, inspiration is important. And, you know, I think over decades, we've not necessarily modeled that consistently enough. For people to be excited about joining us and making Poggy what we all really want it to be. Yes, people wanna do things, but they look at us. We have to be consistent, we have to inspire, we have to motivate people. We should be making people excited about being a part of this change. And that comes with, it starts with us. It starts with consistency on the dais, which, like I said. And that comes with, it starts with us, it starts with consistency on the dais, which, like I said, I know we're fairly new team. But this goes well beyond us in terms of our history. We have to, we have to do better and be consistent. And we can't expect for them to be excited about joining all of our boards and getting involved, like in other cities, people are excited about joining, that's what they wanna do. They find meaning and purpose in doing so. So we have to understand how, what we do here inspires and motivates, or go, takes people in the opposite direction. So, let's start with consistency with us. People look at us, they see certain things. We have to project the right things, which is why also I, I felt like marketing would be important for us. Because so many negative things have been put out over decades, and we've done nothing, uh, to even push many of those perceptions back. Marketing is gonna be important, we have to get people motivated and inspired. That's a part of this job. Some people look at what we do, and they say, I don't wanna have anything to do with that. Part, we, we want people to participate, Lutheran services, they have a, they have an issue with participation. Our boards, issue with participation. What that's telling me is, it's like the dying spirit, guys, we have to revitalize the city within. We have to motivate people to want to be a part of the change. It starts with us. It starts with us.
Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Williams.
Yes, I hear you.
Okay, you can.
No, I'm just asking a question of Mr. Bolden, I, I do hear what you're saying, I just wanna say for the record, I am out in the community and I am trying to find different residents to get on the different boards. And, and I think us being on the dais, I don't think we're projecting in a negative manner, we are taking care of business. Are we gonna always agree? No, we're not, and I think just because we don't always agree doesn't mean that we're projecting a negative, um, we're projecting negativity on the city because we're not going to always agree, and I think from what I'm hearing from the residents, as long as they see that we're taking care of business and we're being fair and doing it, we're in the right way and it's going to, um, benefit the residents. I haven't heard that, you know, we're projecting the city in a negative manner or anything of that. But I just wanna say that you're correct, we, we, we all need to get involved and encouraging different residents to get on the board. Um, and one of my other questions was, you know, do they, I know, do they know where to go to take the ethics training? Yes, we say you need to take the ethics training, but have they been given an orientation to say, okay, how important it is being on this board, and that, you know, like they do us when we, you know, when I got on the board, I know she wanted very good that she gave all of the orientation together and said, you know, explained everything to us, and then, you know, let us know we have to take the ethics training, it can either be in person, or she was scheduling and saying, this is when they're coming out. Or you tell me, I gotta go on the computer, but I make, you know, our, the follow-up being done and forward that. So yes, I mean, they need some guidance, cause this is possibly new to all of them as well.
Um, yes ma'am, they are, uh, being made aware of the information. At appointment, they receive appointment letters, which includes their next steps, and so, uh, they have the information.
So they're getting it in a letter, I was just asking, I mean, I can get a letter, but still not knowing what to do, like, okay, they can't do it on the computer.
The letter have.
An important aspect for them to come in, um, where you, you know, get someone from the county to come in and do an ethics training for them, that's all that I'm asking.
They, they have to watch the video, which is provided to them, and most of them don't have, actually, I've never had anyone to have a problem with that. Or an issue, um, or, you know, face any type of difficulty with accessing that link. That link has been provided for years, even Ms. Warner did that as well.
She did, but I was just saying, I want she also to get the buzz to come in person, that's all I'm saying, now, I understand what you're saying, they're provided a link.
I know she did that for the city commission, but not for board members.
Okay, we.
Just, can I just say one last thing? Let's just try to come up with resolution, just a mere recommendation, when we get people, we get a board in place, why don't we make that a part of the process? Call the meeting, s- put them through the ethics training and, uh, a- advise them at least in that first meeting, and go through all the detailed steps, and, 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 a- and I think we can try to help make the process be a little bit smoother. And that would encourage people to, to participate, and that's all I just wanna say, I'm, I'm done with that.
Okay, we're gonna move on, did you get your last, uh?
Go ahead.
All right, the next, next agenda item is the public comment section. Uh, city clerk, are there any public comments cards completed?
Yes sir, we have two, the first one is Ms. Tammy Bussy.
Good evening.
Good evening.
To the mayor, the commissioners, uh, city manager, attorney, and the clerk, and the public. Um, as I stand here, first I wanna say to Commissioner Bolden, very well said, I agree with you, you know, it starts with leadership. Um, as I stand here, I just, um, not here to complain or anything, I stand here as a born, raised person of Pahokee. Uh, my businesses are here, as well as me looking to put a home on my vacant lot here. And as I drive through my city of Pahokee, um, I'm looking at the dilapidated buildings and, you know, and how our city is looking. And especially those buildings between, um, Rodden Avenue and South Lake Avenue. Um, I hear what we're looking to do, the new apartment buildings, the ones on Barfield, the hotel that we're looking to do, I think that's all great. But what are we doing about the ones that we currently have? We're adding brand new, but we have the, the regular ones still here. I don't know if they're privately owned or owned by the city, but is there any type of code enforcement that's saying, hey, fix these up? Or we're gonna tear them down, or we, if they're private owners, give them some type of fine that, you know, you need to fix it up, paint it, you know, uh, restore those windows or something. Um, as I drive through the town, I see young people with their children, you know, s- laying on the s- on the steps and, you know, in the building, and the windows are broken out, and, and I pull over, you know, not that you publicize what you do, I don't call names, but you pull over and you ask them, how are you? Do you have power? Do you have water? And those are our residents, and I know some of it is their own fault, but what kind of services are we providing to them, or what kind of services can we provide to them? You know, and I'm willing to help however I can, but I'll go over and I'll take someone, I'll go to Hooks or Papa Jimmy's and get them something to eat because they're hungry. And then one particular person said to me, uh, Ms. Bussy, I'm glad you stopped by, but I'm not hungry, I just need toilet tissue. You know, and, and that's just, you know, an indication of how can we come together, you know? Uh, like I said, not pointing fingers or not complaining, I'm just looking for ways that we can help our citizens. Do we have programs, are we looking to programs, I know we have the shelter, I hear the lowest places closing, I don't know if that's true or not. But, um, but you know, I just wanna put that out there, you know, how can we fix this, how can we make it easier for our residents? And that's all I want to do, just point that out, that it breaks my heart when I drive through our city and see it looking so terrible. Other cities are building up, and like I said, I hear what we're looking to do, but what are we gonna do about the ones that's so awful and look so terrible in our city? So that's just something I wanna put out there, yes.
I think one of the things that you addressed was about the dilapidated buildings, Commissioner Cowan is trying to get us to do a workshop, um, and see what directions we're gonna go with, with some of those things, at least review what we have in place, and.
Okay, great. All right, thank you.
Um, if I can say one thing that, was it, we, there's already ordinance on the books, um, as far as paint, uh, that you, that there are business owners, the year, that's your code enforcement supposed to go around. They were five to seven years, they're supposed to paint or what have they do, there is a co- ordinance already on the book. So that's you, the code need to go and make sure those buildings apply, you know, to that code, but it's on the books already. And they are getting, um, needs.
Yeah, we, we have some building too, though, that need to be condemned, officially condemned. And we need to have a process of demolishing them, getting them out the way, get that out, so you take the ba- uh, building by the bank here, that building been condemned probably at least fifteen years now, and it's sitting there. And they've been even pleading with the city, what can you all do to help have this building removed? We don't own it, it's not our property, but we still have responsibility.
They look up on PowerPoint and look at the building, how the building actually was, people from off, they go purchase the building through taxi. So then this whole process starts back over again, cause someone has buying the building. But I know a lot of, uh, dilapidated buildings we have, it's county owned also. So I know, I was talking to Mr. Jackson about that with the, uh, county commission, they have to come out, I saw them out here the other day, the code enforcement from the county, to, um, you know, just, they was even over by the track store. They bringing old trucks and just parking them there, that's, that's our story. That's our story, you just have to be, and stay on, even the vegetation that's growing in the, uh, along South Lake, since twenty sixteen, we've been fighting that and to cut that down. You know, I'll have to take it longer with the long arms and cut it down like they do halfway and they stop. You know, so it's been a fight, but just to keep fighting it.
Yeah.
I can add, I'm just, I know my time is up, but, um, there was an old lady said that she's a grant writer, and she could write grants for funding to help us with those things, you know, that's just something that we could talk about later, but she says she's a grant writer for these same things and help fix up those old buildings and, and, you know, help restore the city, so, you know, um, that's just very special information.
Okay, just, just so the public is, is aware, I think it's been, um, referenced on a couple of different responses from your present, from your, um, um, sharing, Ms. Bussy. But there are several situations, uh, and I'll start with the one that was men- mentioned recently in reference to the bink building by the bank. I've, I've been here a little over eight, right at eight months, and I think that probably has been sold twice, for some of the same reasons. And it's continuing, looking at it historically, at what's, at what continues to happen. And every time it's sold, you have to start your code process over and over and over again. Um, I'm looking at, um, stronger condemnation language that would probably allow us to just go in based on the history. Uh, the others, most of the buildings that you probably passing by and seeing, they're already a part of our code process because we see them as well. And, uh, as, again, we have to follow a process. Um, we just can't go in and tear them down, or we have to follow a process, that's oftentimes when you're, when you meet some of the requirements from the code, that particular area starts over again. So it's like a, you, you're always chasing the final resolution, but it does not happen over, overnight. Um, but we, we are aware of those things, and we are working to try to, to mediate it as much as, if not all of them, as possible.
Okay.
We have one last, one last card, Mr. Octavio Moniz.
Commissioners, mayor, city manager, attorney, good evening, my name's Octavio. I live at, uh, two sixty-five Bannion Avenue in Pahokee, lifelong resident of Pahokee. I love the city of Pahokee, I'll go ahead and say that. But, um, I was under the impression that a representative from Palm Beach County was gonna be here today to discuss. Um, or at least to hear our concerns about, um, properties that they own now. You know, there is a property on Bannion Avenue on the two hundred block, it's been vacant maybe fifteen years. The grass gets real high, you know, our public works, they drive by, but there's nothing they can do because it's a county property. So, um, like I said, I was under the impression that someone from the county was gonna be here to hear our, to address our concerns. They are not here, but I do wanna go on record and state that it is a problem when the county doesn't maintain the properties that they own. The grass there is maybe four and a half feet tall now. Um, there are children on Cypress Avenue that, I guess that's their backyard, you know, um. You know, there's new, there's a new family that bought a house right across the street, I mean, right next door to that property. You know, they have small kids too, you know, tall grass like that, that attracts, you know, vermin, snakes, you know, wildlife, um. So yeah, I was hoping that that person would be here today, they clearly didn't make it today, but I do wanna be on record and state that it is a problem, and I hope that the county, you know, will take care of their issues for the city of Pahokee. Um, besides that, I guess I also wanna go on record and say that we have a chicken problem. There are millions of chickens in the city of Pahokee, and you can't get rid of them, you know, and people say, well, you can eat them, or you can get eggs, but I mean, really, like, maybe we should, you know, eggs are like twelve dollars a carton now, but, I mean, in honesty, um, I don't know, you know, I, I, I just wanna bring that concern to the city. Um, to piggyback on what, uh, Commissioner Bolden said, yeah, you know, um, you know, as a city, we should all, we all need to, you know, do a little bit more for our city, but, um, like I said, sometimes the motivation isn't there, but, um, you know, as citizens too, we do have to decide to be a part of the change. I know that, um, I signed up to be a vendor for the MLK thing that we have this weekend, you know, um. And I mean, if, if a lot of us, you know, little guys do our little part, eventually I think we'll get the result that we want, so. Thank you guys for hearing my concerns and, uh, have a great night.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, Octavio, I know I had, um, contacted, uh, one of the county commissioners about dilapidated building that the county owned. And from what I was instructed that, cause I was asked how to get on the agenda for the county and take the pictures, cause I have pictures of, of all of them. They told me the best thing to do is show up like we do as a, uh, public comment, that we could do that, and that's what my plans are. Cause I have, I, I went around, I took pictures of all of them, and I said, since, and I met with Sarah Baxter before, and I, and sat down with her and gave her all this, still nothing was done. So my next step is, I'm going to go to the county and speak to all seven of the, uh, county commissioners and bring pictures. So if you wanna go with me, let's go, let's go. Yeah, let's go, I, I have the pictures.
And, and not to be repetitive, uh, as late as last week, we made several complaints through our code enforcement, to the county's code enforcement about some of those same addresses that you just mentioned a minute ago.
No, I know, I see Heather, um, she's working all the time, and, um, there was a representative in town maybe two days ago.
Yeah, yeah, yesterday.
Dragged him to that property, and, you know, and, you know, she made him get out of the car, cause it wasn't just like, oh, it's this one, and you can leave, you know, she waited for them to get out, they tried to walk through it, you know, so, um, our, our public works, our code enforcement, they're doing their job. You know, um, it's, it's the county, the county to do that, you know.
Okay.
I think Mr. Taylor wanted to make a, a comment.
Yeah, uh, very brief, um, I know you guys have been working with the county, different departments off and on, but years ago, I mean, many, many years ago, um, I had talked to, I don't know, three or four city managers ago, uh, about the same thing that she mentioned about, you know, as a planner, cause that's what I do, is I, I develop cities and communities, so when you drive through a community, what is on the major right of way coming in is what inspires people to develop or not develop, so anything along the main corridor, I'd probably put your focus there first, um, and anything that is, that this city owns, have you guys ever entertained trying to annex those properties from the county? Because if they're not maintaining them anyway, it's a headache and a cost to them to maintain it, and, um, you guys can annex it, and especially if they have no real use for it. It's a lengthy process, but the property real estate management division for Palm Beach County is who you go through to petition annexing.
Yeah, well, those properties already lie within the city limits of Pahokee, they're just owned by the county.
Yes.
So we won't even need to annex to get them in to.
Oh, so this is an acquisition?
Right.
I think it's through the same department, though, is there a way to acquire it or have them release it?
Right.
Yes, we've, we've made those requests, we've made those requests.
Well, if I can be of any assistance, let me know.
Thank you.
I've been dealing with this city and this, and the city of Belgrade since before I went out on my own, when I was working for the Department of Economic Sustainability, which is now DH, they keep changing the name, uh, Housing and Economic Development. Um, and ever since I came out here back then, I saw the potential, but there's so many moving parts that have to take place in order for that to, to happen, so, you know, if I can offer my assistance in some way, you know, let me know.
We appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, getting down to our last item on our agenda, commissioner comments for the good of the order, and I'm gonna. And I'm sorry, Commissioner Vice Mayor Mervin, if you have any.
I just wanna apologize that I was late, um, for the meeting today. The reason that I was over at, it was from the swearing in of our new, um, state attorney, Alexia Cox. And, um, I tell you, it was a great turnout and, um, we're just looking to continue to moving forward. But, um, she sends her love and ready to work anything that we need, uh, or need her to do, always contact her office. That's it.
Commissioner Bolden?
Uh, I don't have any comments.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Mike Fiersen?
Just wanted everybody to know I love y'all, ain't nothing y'all can do about it. Uh, but my last comments, just thinking about, you know, trying to be innovative and, and taking a different approach to things. And I'm thinking about like our MLK, I heard Mr. Jackson say, you know, the lack of participation when we're trying to get people to, um, fill out applications and with all of our events. And matter of fact, it was on my heart to even mention about the, uh, what have we got in plans for Black History. But in saying that, um, just a recommendation, just food for thought, maybe we might need that whoever's over that, uh, deal with that. Might need to try a different approach. And what I mean by that, instead of waiting for them to come to us, we need to be more personal with our invitations. If we need, if we trying to put an MLK, um, event together, send a personal le- letter, hey, if we need, that we, we want these people to be, that's where those committees could come in place too. We, we want you, this pastor, whatever, to be a speaker or somebody that you know that doing public speaking, set a whole program up and be more, instead of waiting on them to come to us, be, reach out a little bit more to them and nicely make phone calls and send letters to those specific people that we want to be on that particular program. Even if we have to alternate it from church to church. I'm just trying to be, think outside the box, so we can get more community involvement.
Well, with the MLK, most of the programs have featured pastors as the speaker and their congregation have been taking a major part in it. I'm just using that as an example, though. But that's always been, last thirty years that's been happening, but it needs to continue and make it more happen.
But what I, but, but I'm hearing, I think I said, they were waiting on them to, 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 uh, fill out the applications. I'm just saying that we need to take a different approach with that and be more personal with it. Hey, we would like for you and your congregation. It don't necessarily have to be a pastor, somebody who's just a good public speaker, or whatever the case may be. And I'm just trying to get our community, cause we need our community to be involved.
And it takes all of us to ask, all of us to go out and, and, you know, we all hear it. It don't take just this.
I just wanna be careful when, you know.
But it takes all of us to go, hey, do you be in the play? Will you be in the, it takes all of us.
Yeah, I, I agree. I agree. I agree with that. But, you know, again, that's, that's again, that could be one of those things too. We get the, but I know it's gonna, it's a fight to get the community involvement, but, you know, a committee that would even, if we have to make up another committee, that, that's one of their things, as far as public, um, events and stuff. And maybe something that, if I'm not mistaken, that they believe there's something already in place, but we, I, I just wanna try to move forward and try something different. Let's not keep doing the same thing expecting different results, cause if we keep doing the same thing, we're gonna keep getting the same results.
Commissioner Williams?
Um, I just wanted to say, um, thanks to all the runners there that are listening, but also I'm not sure if all the commissioners, um, saw the letter from Congressman, um, before me, she sent us a brief survey.
Gotta finish my responses to that.
You know, wanted to help us support whatever our, um, legislative priorities are. Um, so I did fill mine out, so this, if we all can fill them out, you know, if they can help us do whatever they can help us do to make sure that we get that bill out of their hands. And to also that would help support, um, what our legislative priorities are. And good night.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. Move by Vice Mayor Mervin, second by.
Second.
Commissioner Mike Fiersen, call for questions. Hearing none, if you're ready for a vote, roll call meting clerk.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Mike Fiersen?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Commissioner Calvin Williams?
Yes.
Mayor Bapp?
Yes, thank you. Meeting adjourned at eight thirty-five PM.
Again, I love all y'all, ain't nothing y'all can do about it.